This is Charlotte Talks. I'm Mike Collins. Get ready. Property tax revaluation is about to get underway, and that could affect your pocketbook. How much? Stick around. We'll ask that question of the Mecklenburg County Tax Assessor later in the program. First, Charlotte City Council is considering staying on the job just a little longer. Some members of council want to extend their terms from two to four years. This is not the first time this has come up, and every other time that it has, voters have said no. This time, polls show overwhelming opposition to the idea, but that won't stop council from considering it, perhaps voting on it themselves or turning it over to you in a referendum this fall. Either way, we thought an exploration of the pros and cons might be in order, so we've invited two council members on opposite sides of this debate to join us. Democratic Mayor Pro Tem Julie Islett believes the time has come to move to four-year terms, given the increasing complexity of government in a growing city. She is here, along with Republican Councilman Ed Riggs, who is also Vice Chair of the Economic Development Budget and Housing and Neighborhood Development Committees, and who opposes any shift to four-year terms. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Good to see you. You can, well, you can't join us right now because we pre-taped this this morning because I have a busy schedule ahead of them today. Well, let's talk about this. This is an idea, Julie, that keeps coming up, sometimes from council, sometimes from county commission. Is it always Democrats who bring it up or who advocate for four-year terms? Or have Republicans in the past been in favor of it? Or do you know?
I don't really know. I can't speak to what's happened in the past, but when I, when we talk about, it came up last time, we were talking about, what was it, 11 years ago? And it was run, the committee that took a look at it was run by our mayors that served 20 to 30 years ago. So, we're a very different city today. I, I serve at-large, so I don't know, I think all of our at-large representatives are Democrats. That's a little bit different than serving in a district. You're, you've got a lot of city to cover, so I don't know if there's a correlation with that, but I wouldn't have known what I know now until I was serving. So, I do believe that this is something we should put to the voters, but I also believe we need an opportunity to talk with the voters and explain the job and explain why it's, might be needed.
This came out of your committee, Ed, the Economic Development, is that right?
Correct.
Budget Committee. Where did it come from? What was the genesis of this? Did it surprise you when it came up?
It was a referral, actually. So, the subject had come up. Members of council said we would like to have committee consider it. So, it went, in fact, to our Budget and Effectiveness Committee, which is kind of our rules committee now. And we had a lively discussion there. We were briefed by the city attorney on what the ins and outs were, how you would do it if you did it. And finally, by a vote of four to one, three to two, I think, we decided to refer with the recommendation to proceed toward four-year terms to full council.
You are one of the two Republicans on city council, and both Republicans, you and Tarek Bakari, oppose the four-year term idea. Given what has happened in Mecklenburg County, particularly with the county commission and the sweep of Democrats into office and Republicans out of office, and the only two standing are you and Tarek.
Very funny, Mike, yeah.
Would it not be in Republicans' best interest to extend your tenure on council as long as you can?
I don't see it as a partisan issue, really. So, my reasons for opposing it are really more practical. And you might think that we would look for it, but I, if you were trying to look at it that way, you might say also, we don't want them to kind of lock the door after they closed it, as it were.
Three years ago, the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners asked for voter approval to switch from two to four-year terms, and I think voters said no by nearly two to one margin. Do you really think they would say yes to this?
Well, you know, I'd like to look at how other cities did this, how Greensboro did it, how Pineville did it. We, we're the 17th largest city in the country, and with the exception of Fort Worth, we're the only city that doesn't have four-year terms and a four-year mayor. So, I guess I'd like to know why other cities felt like it was a good idea. These are cities that we compete with for business investment, for tourists, for pretty much everything, so.
Why do you think it's a good idea?
Because, so I'm more interested in the staggered part than I am the four-year part, but I don't think you can stagger two-year terms. Because when we, what I know now about things like land use decisions has taken me quite a while to figure out, and I can't say that I know this perfectly, but when we start, we hit the ground running. We have, so we meet every week. County Commission and School Board only meets every other week. We meet every week, and one of those weeks is a zoning week. And we spend, on a Monday, seven hours, hour and a half lunch, five hours, so almost seven hours, talking about zoning cases. We're growing fast. We're making decisions on land use that, when you first start out, you don't really know what you're doing. You don't know what TOD is, you don't know what MUD-O is, but you're making decisions on permanent structures that are going to impact the landscape and the people of this community for decades.
Do you disagree with that, Ed?
I don't disagree with it. I think there are other considerations that lead me to my conclusion. So, for one, local officials tend to get elected as a result of low-budget campaigns with very little prior history of service. I think the public has the right to review a decision it made when it elects somebody at a shorter interval. Also, if people are in office for a long time, they have a tendency early in the term to do things that are unpopular, with the idea that they'll be forgotten by the time they come up for reelection, like a tax increase and so on. So, I like that more immediate accountability to the public at shorter intervals.
Well, she likes the staggering, and the staggering that Julie is talking about here is that theoretically speaking, part of this decision might be that people run, the at-large districts would run in one, in even-numbered years, and then what, the, the?
District, and then the mayor would run maybe with at-large.
Okay, so we'd have people coming and going throughout the process, which I think might have its own problems, because that would be a perpetual learning curve, it seems to me. But what about the staggered nature of this? Because you do have some old-timers sitting there, but newcomers coming on, and it would be all at once.
Well, I did agree in our committee meeting that if we had four-year terms, they should be staggered. So, I don't have an issue with that particular provision. It's more about the four years.
What about the learning curve, though? It seems to me that this is a very, because it's taken me 20 years of doing this show to understand any of this, and, and you guys are coming in, particularly, the new, we had a lot of newcomers on council this time around.
And I, and I think we're just starting to see us work together as a body. It's been 11 months.
What about that learning curve? It's gotta be hard.
Well, again, I think you come in for the first time, and you come up that learning curve, and then most people get reelected. So, we had quite a lot of turnover this last time. That was unusual. There were some people who had been on for a long time and moved off. There were two people who ran for mayor and left council. But once you've come up the learning curve, the question of whether it's two-year or four-year terms doesn't really matter. There are people who serve two-year terms and are around like Bill James for over 20 years.
You've said, Julie, that the council structure has changed since the last time this came up for consideration by city council, but I think you said it was, what, 11 years ago or something like that?
No, the.
1970s? It was even further than that?
Last time it changed was in the 70s, the last time the council, yeah.
And you say that in the 70s, we ranked around 60th in the country in terms of size among American cities, and today we are the 17th largest city in America, and our region is even higher than that. And it could be argued, I suppose, that Charlotte is the predominant influence in the region. And you mentioned cities like, I think Denver, Nashville, Seattle, Columbus, Ohio, even Atlanta, have city councils with four-year terms. What impact, or do you know the answer to this, either of you? What impact has that had on those cities? Not why they made the decision, but what has happened as a result of the decision?
Well, I know when I go to meetings, so I've been to Chicago for the council presidents' meeting of large cities, that's the mayor pro tems, council presidents. They know each other. They, they've built relationships with each other. You can see, we just, we're at a meeting recently with a community member who said, "Those councils clearly know each other, and they know how to work together, and you guys don't." And I thought that, that was a community member who was with us for a council meeting with seven other cities.
She just threw out a bunch of terms I've never heard, and I've talked to city council people for a long time. What did you call them? Mud something and, and, what were they?
Mud, oh, Todd. And that, that's a, for me, that's probably my key point right now, is that we are going through, we started by going through a rewrite of all of our ordinances that have been on the books for decades. And then we stopped and said, "Hang on, we don't even know why we're doing it, because we don't know what place types are, and we don't know who gets to decide that."
You're talking about the, the city planner who's come in here and came, hit the ground running, came up with this great plan, and then you started considering it, and you didn't understand any of it, so it all stopped, and he had to redo it, essentially.
Well, he, he wasn't here yet. We were doing that, and we started as council members, and Ed and I were talking about this, we're like, "Well, wait a minute. Who gets to decide where place types go?" When Taiwo came in, a number of us said, "Can we consider doing a comprehensive vision plan, so that the community comes together and says, 'What do we want this city to look like for the next several decades?'" Because we have no idea. We are, as Mitch Silver has said, we're a deal-making city. When we approve, approve these rezonings, we look at them on a case-by-case basis without really understanding how the pieces fit together. And the reason I like the idea of staggered terms is because we're undertaking this comprehensive vision plan for 2040, and we can keep the ball moving. We are, our planning department is rewriting our transit-oriented development ordinance right now. It's a massive undertaking. Other cities have turned it down because they had council members that didn't understand it, and my concern is that we will get to this point, and we will have new council members who don't understand what they're approving. And that's why we get a city that people are frustrated with, because you've got, you know, buildings here and there without any particular logic to the planning of it. So, council members have to understand planning and have to have time to consistently be able to work on these things.
Planning can't be the only thing. Ed Riggs, speak to that.
The thing, planning is very technical. It's something that takes a while to learn. But your premise here is that people can't get reelected, that they can't serve for a long time because they have to defend their, their seats at two-year intervals. I'm saying that they can be there, and we have had occasions in the past where most of council is pretty seasoned, so I'm not sure those two issues are identical.
But if you have an election every two years, and you've just gotten your feet wet, and you're just beginning to understand what all the acronyms are and where all the bodies are buried, and then you have to run for your election and you lose, and somebody new takes your place, it all starts over again.
Isn't it a good thing if you?
Well, I don't know. Is it?
Well, yeah, I, I think it's a good thing. If, if the people decide they don't want you in that seat anymore, I think it's a good thing they have a chance to make a change.
So, so my biggest concern is not the winning or losing, it's who keeps the ball moving while we're all out campaigning, and we all campaigned for seven or eight months.
Well, let's talk about that, because the mayor was on this program not too long ago, and we talked about that, because I asked her how she felt about this, and she was very evasive about it. But she did say, she did say that candidates file for reelection in July for a September primary and a November general election. That's four months. That leaves you what? I can't do math.
Oh, they start fundraising.
That leaves you 20 months.
A lot earlier.
To be in office without having to run for office again. Is that really a burden? Seriously?
Well, I, I mean, for the three, three of the four at-large members raised close to $100,000 each, so you don't do that in four months. You're doing that. I mean, this is a very different scenario than it is back in the 70s, back in the 80s. My concern, though, is that it's not the campaigning. My concern, and I asked the planning department staff the other day about this. I said, "What happens when we're all campaigning?" They said, "We put stuff on a shelf." The South End Vision Plan sat on a shelf for eight months when we were campaigning. I just learned that the other day.
We'll come back, we'll talk about that, and we'll talk about Tarek Bakari's reaction from what he's learned about being on city council for the short time that he has been on, because he's one of the newer members. Julie Islett is here, she's the Democrat mayor pro tem at Charlie City Council, and she's in favor of expanding to four-year terms, something that the council will take up and may or may not decide to refer to voters in a referendum this fall. And Ed Riggs is the Republican who opposes this. He's the Chair of the Budget, the Economic Development, the Housing and Neighborhood Development Committees. You're a busy man.
I am.
We're going to take a break. We're going to come back with more in just a moment at Charlotte Talks on WFHE.
MUD is mixed-use development. Okay. And C-MUD is no, no longer.
It is no longer. That was a good idea, changing that.
Yes.
So, apparently, we're still streaming?
Yes, we're still streaming. That's right. Because we're not live, we're still streaming. Hello, streamers.
Studio sound versus.
Countdown. Yeah, like we're normal. Yeah, 18 down. I, yeah, I don't know how long, we may take the whole second segment, I don't know, because the other thing is pretty cut and dry, nuts and bolts. Okay, we'll just, we'll just see how it goes. Okay, here we go. It's Charlotte Talks on listener-funded, 90.7 WFHE.
I'm Mike Collins. We're here with Julie Islett, mayor pro tem, Democrat in favor of four-year terms on city council, and Ed Riggs, Republican, not in favor of this, and the Chair of the, of many committees, the Budget, Economic Development, Housing and Development, Housing and Neighborhood Development Committees. You just mentioned, Julie, the South End Plan, and how essentially it was shelved for eight months while council members were out there campaigning. If that's true, there are those who don't favor four-year terms, who say that giving council that long time in office will allow them to be reckless, as you just mentioned, Ed, in the early years, because people will forgot, will have forgotten what they did in the first two or three years, so when it comes time to campaign again, they can get away with bloody murder. What do you say to that?
Well, I think it's the body that we look at, right? It's how the body is voting. So, you're always going to have an election every two years, and I think, you know, we saw nationally this year, the country reacted to things in the past two years, and there was a wholesale change in some cases. So, any one person, yes, I completely agree with that. That is the risk you take, but it's really, how is the body voting, and what are they doing? Because you need six votes to get anything done.
But if you're stacking the terms, the body, some people are going to pay the price for the body doing something the electorate doesn't like, while others will scatter free, so to speak, right?
Well, depending on individual votes, right?
So, you're all, so somebody's going to be up for election in two years all the time, so you're saying that's going to put, put them on their best behavior?
Well, I feel like I'm held accountable every day. I mean, you know, we're, we're very visible in the community. We're out seven days a week, so I, I don't know that, I feel like I'm, have the ability to hide while, in an off-campaign year, but I think that voters do have the ability to hold people accountable every two years.
And you point out, Ed, that local government is the entry point for a lot of people into politics. That's where they start. You don't generally start, like Donald Trump did, at, at the presidential level. You generally start lower and work your way up and get some experience with, with government. And you say they get elected, to use your words, "based on campaign promises and their ability to project an image." How can a Republican use that argument in 2018, given that's precisely the situation with the president?
That the president did that, is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that when the president did that, the coverage for a long time, while he was still a candidate, through the primaries and so on, in the media, gave people everything they needed to know. Everything he said was quoted, he was tweeting. You had some opportunity to get acquainted with the man. What I'm saying is that these local campaigns are very low-budget. We send out some mailers, and we go to a few meetings and things like that. A lot of people vote, they've never seen us, they have very little knowledge of what we're like, and that is the primary reason that I think that for these entry-level people, and in these smaller-budget campaigns, you need to have some opportunity to watch the person perform in office, and then decide in less than four years whether you like what they're doing.
Would it be possible to have two-year terms for newcomers, and then have them reelected to four-year terms after their first term? Is that something that, that's done anywhere in the country?
I haven't seen that, but again, you know, to me, I'm not fixed on four-year staggered terms. I'm fixed on having a community conversation about structures. So, some of the housing advocates said, "You know, what about instead of four years, you guys each have a policy aide, because you clearly have to know a lot about policy, a lot about a lot of different issues, and we don't, we don't have that." So, there could be other solutions to be able to get our job done more efficiently.
City council can make this decision on their own. Are both of you, however, in favor of putting this to a referendum of the voters in the fall? If you decide that this is a good idea on council to do this, would you put it to a referendum?
Well, to explain more exactly, we can either put it to a referendum, or we can try to do it without one, in which case, if there's a petition with 5,000 signatures asking for a referendum, there still has to be one. I feel strongly, and I think a number of my colleagues on the committee did, that we should go the referendum route and not attempt to get this done without asking the public.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Really? Is that because it could easily be overturned by voters, or because you just, you think that's a good idea on principle?
I, I just, I think that people need to feel as if they're part of the conversation. I think they need to, again, I didn't know what I know now as a voter.
Because your Democratic colleague, Luanne Mayfield, has said that this community has historically voted against its best interest, and she was referring specifically to the fact that the downtown arena was put to a referendum of the voters. They resoundingly said no. City council, a different city council came back and said, "Oh, yes, we are," and they built it. And she considers the building of that arena a good thing, and the voters didn't know what they were talking about, so we should, we should make that decision. She's a colleague. What do you say to that?
Two, two things, Mike. One, that's a very dangerous place to go when you start to say, "We know better than the people do." The other thing is.
But don't you, I'm seriously.
No, no, we, we get asked by the public to kind of engage and to work on their behalf and go into the details of complicated decisions and to act in their interest, right? If you start saying, though, "I know they don't like it, but it's good for them," you better be prepared to defend that.
But we, we live in a representative democracy. We hire you to, to dig into the weeds and make decisions for us, and if people go to the polls every four years and vote for a president about whom they know very little, be he, a he or a she, beyond the, the image commercials that they see on television, why do you think they know what's going on in city government with acronyms that you just threw out and planning procedures and the 2040 vision plan? How, how could we possibly know? We don't pay any attention.
Well, I think some people do pay attention, and certainly, and that's, again, that's why I'd rather have the community conversations. The people that work closest to council have said to me they support four-year terms, because they're frustrated. They're constantly trying to re-educate a new batch of people about all sorts of different issues. And so, you know, it just tells me that we have to do a better job of communicating with people.
I see your point, Ed, that saying something like that borders on arrogance, and it's a slippery slope from that to autocracy.
Democratic institutions.
But you guys are theoretically, do know more. You spend a lot of time with briefing books and tons of reading material, digging into the weeds of this. You attend meeting after meeting after meeting, and even if you have a city council groupie who comes to every single meeting that you have, which is probably not the case.
Oh, we do.
They, they can't possibly know what you know.
But this is not that arcane, all right? I mean, if you put the question to people, "What do you think? Two years or four years? How often do you want to have the opportunity to make changes?" That's something that people have a sense about.
Okay.
The other thing is, we're talking about the terms of our own employment, and therefore, I really feel that this is something we need to do in consultation with the public.
Well, could you put it down, could you put it down the road, saying we're going to go to four-year terms in 2028?
Well, it wouldn't become effective anyway until the 2021 election.
Okay.
And you could put it down the road to try to distance the people making that decision from the, the impact that it has.
If, if four-year terms are adopted, is this going to be what you see as the first step toward a different kind of city government, in which the mayor might ultimately have more power? Because right now, the mayor, she, is a ribbon cutter.
You know, that, I mean, that's another point. I'd like to see us take two separate votes, too, extending the terms of council and extending the terms of mayors. And some cities have done that. So, Boston has a four-year mayor, two-year council, although I believe their council's full-time. They make $99,000 per council member and have a whole staff. So, you know, there's a lot of different structures out there. We just have to have that conversation as to what would work best for Charlotte.
But we're becoming this big city, and we have a part-time amateur political staff, being the city council and, and the mayor. Is it time for Charlotte to have a more professional outlook on, on this and do what other cities have done, and make this a full-time job for you guys?
Charlotte is one of the biggest cities to have a council manager form of government, and so other cities have what are called strong mayors, who have executive authority. I don't quite agree with your characterization of our mayor as a ribbon cutter.
Well, she, she does, they do provide leadership, they do, they do, they do put their two cents worth out, moral leadership, where they, their vision for the city, no question. They don't have a vote on council.
I mean, she was the driver behind the, the bonds for the housing, for example.
Right, but they don't have a vote.
No, but what they do is they coordinate the actions of council, and basically, they put something out there, and then they try to get the support of council behind that idea. So, they have that kind of leadership, but it's not a leadership that comes from statutory authority. It's the kind of leadership you exercise in that position.
So, am I hearing you say that if we go to four-year terms for council, that does not include the mayor?
Well, it could, we could take it as one vote, or we could take it as two separate votes. I'd prefer to take it as two separate votes, because if nothing else, I think we need a four-year mayor. Our mayor sets, a good mayor sets the agenda and the tone for the council into what we're going to work on. So, if we're not going to have two-year, four-year council, then I'd like to see a mayor that can keep the, the train on the tracks and keep moving the agenda forward, or the strategies forward.
Ed and others have said that two-year terms are good enough for our state legislature, and they're good enough for members of the U.S. House of Representatives. Why isn't it good enough for Charlotte City Council?
Well, I would argue that our U.S. House of Representatives is not exactly, hasn't been terribly effective.
Is that why? Because of two-year terms, or there's something else at play there?
Oh, there's a lot of things at play, but they do spend 30 hours.
So, why stop, why stop at four? Go to six, like the Senate?
Well, it's a different, you know, our constitution set that up differently. The state, though, you know, they go up to Raleigh for how many months out of the year? In the short session, they go a couple of months, in the long session.
Three or four, and then it's six to seven in the long term.
And they have paid legislative staff, so it's, it's a different job.
Different, okay. Some Republicans believe that the way city council, I guess, districts are drawn or, or the seats are comprised, kind of shuts them out, and the last election on, on county commission would probably indicate there's some truth to that. Do you worry that four-year terms will shut out people even longer, even, even more severely?
I don't see a connection like that. My, my concern right now is that we have in total 37 elected people from Mecklenburg County in our delegation, on the Board of County Commissioners, and on city council, and three of them are Republican. And it's really just not a healthy situation, given that the mix of people in Charlotte is nowhere near that, to have such unrepresentative government.
You've called these two-year terms, Julie, "a waste of time." I think that's a quote. But in 2011, a former Democratic mayor, Harvey Gant, and former Republican mayor, Richard Vinroot, led a community group that recommended remaining at two-year terms. Do you just disagree with that, or has something fundamentally changed since 2011?
Well, I, I think it has. Again, look at the size of our city when those two gentlemen were our mayors. So, part of the reason they were asked to lead that commission, and I totally support having a citizen commission, but I don't know that it should be led by people that served and run, ran the city 30 years ago, when we were 300,000 or 250,000.
But that was seven years ago, 2011.
The commission was, but those individuals were chosen because they had been mayors back in the 80s. So, I think we're a fundamentally different city than we were back then, and I, I think that we have to, you know, when you go to a Nashville, when you go to Austin, you go to cities that have a vision for their city, and you know where you are. If we really want to think about the long term, about who we want to be, and everybody[1644.78] I think that we have to, you know, when you go to a Nashville, when you go to Austin, you go to cities that have a vision for their city, and you know where you are. If we really want to think about the long term, about who we want to be, and everybody says Charlotte doesn't know who they want to be, then we've got to have the community engaged, the civic community engaged, and elected officials to create a vision and be able to carry out a vision. And I don't believe that when you've got, and like it or not, and it is different for Mr. Riggs in District 7 running than it is for at-large representatives running. I think you had a couple of candidate forums. I had 30. You know, because we have to run in seven districts, and serving in, on the West Side is very different than serving in Ballentine. So you have to have a full conversation about it, what it means. And the bigger picture is, what do we want to be as Charlotte, and how are we going to get there? And do we have a form of government now that's going to get us there?
There's so many different sides of Charlotte and parts of Charlotte. All of them have a different vision for what they want to be and what the city should be as a whole. Should we have at-large districts? Should that be part of this conversation? Should it all be district representation?
At this point, given the seemingly invincible majority of Democrats in the overall population, if you have a certainty that all of the at-large seats are going to be occupied by Democrats, then you have hardwired an imbalance relative to the mix of the population in our local government. So to that extent, I'm not sure it is a good idea.
First-term Republican Tarek Bakari, who opposes four-year terms, says he's now been on council for a year, and that he's noticed the staff can run the city just fine with council turning over every two years. He says, "Council," quote, "is just not that important."
Wow. Why have a council?
Have you heard that before?
No, I mean, I've heard that he said that, but I think some people would say, "The staff runs the city, and that's the problem. We elect you guys to make policy decisions for us." So that's, that's sort of a minefield, I think.
The staff keeps the trains running and makes sure that the services are delivered and that the thing that the city does. The council's job is really to set goals and to look out further and to direct the staff in terms of which way we want to go. So I think when you compare us with other cities, for example, it's not about two-year terms and four-year terms, in my opinion. It's about the business leadership of the community, what other organizations there are that participate in discussions about the direction in which they want to go. They have very active business leadership, and we used to here. And one of the issues that Charlotte faces right now is that we don't have the kind of leadership from the business community that we used to. And council is being pushed to sort of step up and assume some of that responsibility. But I think it's wrong to kind of paint us as that irrelevant.
Well, in that case, because back in the days when we did have this business leadership, and you're talking about Hugh McCall, Ed Crutchfield, Ralph Neal, Bill Lee, et cetera, when we had that, these are people with, who had ties to the community, long-term ties to the community, who felt the city, understood the city, had a vision for the city. That comes with experience and time in office.
Exactly.
That's an argument for four-year terms, Ed.
But a lot of those people were not in office.
No, none of them were in office, but they had longevity.
You had, you had business people who could serve. I mean, this isn't a part-time job. You know, I spend 40 or 50 hours a week. This isn't a part-time job. Back then, you had business people that Duke Energy or would put somebody, would say, "Go ahead and serve for two years." That was a very different relationship. You had, those people had relationships in the business community. Today, you elect people, and they don't, they don't know. They don't have a connection with the business community necessarily.
So that's an argument, I think, is not, is that not an argument for four-year terms, this long view that comes from background and experience?
I don't think total time in service is related to the length of terms. Look at Bill James. Look at Dumeon Clark. I mean, you can serve two-year terms consecutively for a very long time. So you might be talking more about term limits, which is another topic, but just the duration of each term is not the deciding factor.
So Ed Riggs, you're against this idea. Julie Iselt, you're in favor of this idea. When will this come up for a vote before council?
I'm not in a hurry, honestly, because I think we've got to have community conversations. I think there's a lot of angst about it out there. And, you know, I plan on having in the new year--
Well, this is not, we have 30 seconds. This is not imminent?
I don't know. It's not--
There's going to be a council discussion in December, full council discussion. If we decide then on a sort of straw-poll vote to proceed, there's a timeline that leads up to the referendum in September that we would have to follow.
You get the last word. Republican Ed Riggs is not in favor of four-year terms. Julie Iselt, who is, she's the Democrat Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you both for being here this morning.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
When we come back, we'll talk about taxes, tax assessment in Mecklenburg County.